We'll call the Planning Commission meeting for February 28, 2018 to order. We have a roll call and termination of a quorum, please.
Chairperson Sattler, Vice Chair Borders.
Present.
Commissioner Asfeyne.
Here.
Commissioner Monroy.
Here.
Commissioner Solarno.
Here.
Commissioner Stoll.
Here.
Commissioner Tingle.
Here.
All quorums present.
Commissioner Monroy, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matters that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Is there any public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none. Approval of minutes, review and approval of minutes for the January 31, 2018 meeting. Is there any comments or changes or questions?
I move to approve the minutes of January 31st.
Do we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Eschwin, a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Solarno. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I abstain, I was absent.
Thank you, sir. Modification of agenda. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order if the public body continues two or more agenda items for consideration. Any public body may have to remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at this time. Lee, is there... Turn it to you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, there's two items that have a request to continue and so we have a recommendation to continue to the next meeting, so we'd like to move those items up to the front to dispense with those so that any applicants or members of the public are there. So we'd like to move to the front before the continuance E3, which is a request for the special use permit for the detached garage at 5371 Corrine Court. And then the E7 is the tentative subdivision map for Lampa Ranch North, and we should just be able to quickly dispense with those continuances so people don't have to stick around for that. So when we get to the public hearing matters, please start with E3 and then move to E7 and then go back to the other items.
E3, SUP-17-217, for possible action to consider a request for a special use permit for Robert D. Hoskins to construct a detached garage on property zone conservation reserve located at 5371 Corrine Court, APN 008-816-21.
Yes, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. The applicant on this particular item had a neighborhood meeting last night, and based on that meeting is redesigning his plans. So to give the Commission the opportunity to review the plans that the applicant will indeed be requesting, the staff asked the applicant if it would be okay to continue this item to the meeting of March 28, 2018, and the applicant has concurred. So with that, the staff would recommend a motion to continue this item to the meeting of March 28, 2018.
Do we take public comment as well on this?
If you'd like to.
Ask if there's any comments on that motion in particular probably be appropriate.
Before we make the motion, public comment on this item, that it would like to come at this time or they can wait till the meeting in March when it's continued? Okay, for a motion.
I move to continue item E3, SUP-17-217, to the March 28th, 2018 meeting.
Do we have a motion? We have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Borders. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? E7, TSM-17-184, for possible action to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding a tentative subdivision map application from Blackstone Development Group, Inc., to create a 209-lot subdivision on approximately 58.5 acres within the Lampa Ranch North specific plan area of property approved for single-family 6,000 SF6 zoning located at 22200 East Fifth Street, APN 010-041-71. Hope.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant contacted staff and has requested continuation to the meeting of March 28, 2018, as they're contemplating a redesign.
Again, if there's someone that wants to comment on this particular item, or they can save their comments till the March 28 meeting, is there any comments at this time? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'll move that we... I would like to make a motion to continue TSM-17-184 to the March 28 meeting.
Do we have a motion from Commissioner Borders?
A second.
Second from...
I second it.
Commissioner Solarno?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, we'll go back to the start of the agenda. E1, AB-18-008, for possible action to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding an application from Carson City for an abandonment of a portion of right-of-way of Proctor Street between North Nevada Street and North Curry Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. As the Chair mentioned, this is a request to abandon a portion of Proctor Street between North Nevada and Curry Street. The Board of Supervisors is authorized to approve an abandonment. The Planning Commission makes a recommendation based on the ability to make the seven required findings. This section of road doesn't currently function as a road. As you'll see in this photograph, there's an apron and curb, and it's more of a parking area. If you physically go out there, it doesn't feel like a road, it feels like a parking lot. In looking at the findings, the findings ask that you consider material injury to public, public benefit, and the parking value, among other things. On August 26, 2015, some of you may recall, the Planning Commission approved a mixed-use project at 308 North Curry. The property owner of that project, Steve Neighbors, is present tonight. That project requires 48 parking spaces. By formally abandoning this portion of roadway will allow for, when this building is completed and occupied, for that parking to occur on-site, as opposed to those folks who are occupying that building utilizing other parking, public parking within the downtown area. So staff has... I did want to speak actually specifically to the parking because that was a question that's come up as to, you know, well, what happens to the parking? The reality is, once this building's complete, there's a demand for parking. Staff has reviewed in the staff report the seven required findings, and we are able to make those findings in the affirmative, and we are recommending that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors adoption of the order of abandonment for this portion of roadway. The city's property manager, Stephanie Hicks, is present, and she is the applicant for this item.
Thank you. Any questions for Hope from the board on this item? Yes, Commissioner?
If the spaces are going to serve the 308 North Curry Street property, are those parking spaces still going to be open to the public if it's now becoming part of the private property of 308 North Curry?
My understanding is it is private parking. However, the property manager, Mr. Neighbors, may have more to say on that matter.
Also, Hope, currently, I know you can take a shortcut, I mean, basically it is, they go through there. Will that still be open through, complete, to where people would cut through there if they needed to, or is it private property, they could close that off?
When it's private property, they will have the right to close it.
Would the applicant please want to come forward? State your names and for the board, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Stephanie Hicks, Carson City Real Property Manager.
And good evening, Commissioners and staff. Steve Neighbors.
First of all, have you seen the recommendations and conditions of approval? Do you accept those as written, or is there any question on any of those?
Yes, we do accept those as written, and we have reviewed them.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Just to sort of explain the dynamics of what will happen with those parking spaces if this is approved by the Board of Supervisors.
At this point in time, I've asked the city if I could turn the entire parking lot into just customer parking only, not identified simply for Adams 308, but for anybody downtown. I've asked if the city would also patrol that because it's mostly filled now by people from the Secretary of State, employees, and other people from the building. So I really would like to turn it into customers for the entire community. That's my plan at this time. I'm going to take the Arlington Square, the ice skating rink parking lot, I'm going to convert that to a private parking lot for employees and owners of the businesses so that they don't impose on the downtown traffic parking for customer parking. I've had a lot of complaints that there's not enough parking downtown, and so I've been in control of the, all the Nugget parking lots and a lot of the parking lots downtown for the past 10 years, and I've allowed anybody to use them. I think if we all work together and allow the parking on the streets to be for customers, that'll help everybody, and my intent is to allow the Adams 308 to be open to customers as well. I've also reached out and met with the Presbyterian Church. They're going to cooperate and also have that two-hour-only parking. So the entire parking lot that we own and the Presbyterian Church lot will all be customer parking two-only, two-hour-only. That's what it'll state on every stall.
For the benefit of the record, that was Steve Neighbors speaking into the record. And if I can just clarify, Mr. Neighbors, are you essentially saying it would be your recommendation that this is public parking with a two-hour limit enforced by the city?
So I... I've asked for me to try that. I need the parking for Adams 308, but I would like to try to be a good neighbor to all of my neighbors. I can see that a lot of the parking is taken up by state and owners, and so I'd like to try to convert it, I'd like to try to have it be open to two-hour customer-only parking. I have addressed this with the city manager, and they've agreed to go ahead and enforce two-hour parking at this point in time.
Will the two-hour parking limit be a 24-hour limit because aren't some of those spaces going to be required for your project itself?
So I'm going to post it as just two-hour customer parking only, and I'm not going to put a time limit on it. When the city, the city won't enforce it other than when the city chooses to do so. And if I have a problem off hours or on weekends, then I'll address that with the city manager, and I'll probably then take on that burden.
So are there dedicated parking spaces for all the residents, residential units in your facility?
Yes, there are garages there for the residences.
Okay.
So each apartment has a garage.
Okay, thank you.
I take that back. I think there's going to be one apartment that may not have a garage, and if so, I'll designate a parking stall for one of them.
Well, and those parking spaces for the residents are within the project, right?
Yes.
Most of them?
Yes.
So it shouldn't affect this lot, they wouldn't be using that anyway, so.
No, there's, like I said, there's 10 garages. I think one of them is being taken by two residents, by one residence. So I'll end up by, I think there's about eight or 10 stalls actually on the project, and I'll assign one or two, I'll assign those two residents. So I'll have excess parking for the residents.
Other questions for the applicant?
And the adjacent parking lot on the south side of Proctor, that's your property also, is that correct?
On the south side of, adjacent.
It's the 1201 lot up there on the picture.
And that's currently basically public parking?
Yes, I also have eight blocks of parking that I just allow the public to use too, and I've been doing so for 10 years.
Okay.
So that's, I've been allowing people to park on the Divine Wine Lot where the insurance building is, and all along from Stewart, from Robinson, to Musser, to, from Stewart on forward. I did go in and see the Secretary of State to see if they would consider, instead of parking on the 308 parking lot, I offered them free parking on the parking lot right behind the city annex, right by, right next to the city parking lot. They'd have to walk a block, two blocks, block and a half.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
This time we'll call for, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve an abandonment of right-of-way application, AB-18-008, for an abandonment of a portion of right-of-way of Proctor Street, an area 66 feet wide by up to 170 feet long, totaling 11,228 square feet, more or less, located between North Division Street and North Curry Street, North Nevada Street, excuse me, North Nevada Street and North Curry Street, adjacent to properties located at 234 North Curry Street and 308 North Curry Street, adjacent to assessors parcel numbers 003-212-01 and 003-228-01, based on seven findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
We have a motion from Commissioner Eschwin. We have a second from...
I'll second it.
Commissioner Solarno. Back for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie Seven... E2, AB-18-009, for possible action to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding an application from Carson City for an abandonment of right-of-way on Aspen Street between Arthur Street and Clear Creek Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hope you all were able to find Aspen Street. It was a little tricky, right?
It did come up on my map list.
Right, but then when you're physically out there, it's hard, right? Okay, so as I said before, the Board of Supervisors is authorized to approve an abandonment. The Planning Commission makes a recommendation based on the ability to make the seven required findings. Currently, there's concrete barriers preventing utilizing this road. I have a picture of the, no, I thought I had a picture of the barriers. My understanding is the city did, but Stephanie Hicks, the property manager, can speak more specifically to that. But currently, there are concrete barriers that prevent utilizing this road as a throughway from Arthur Street to Clear Creek. So the city is the applicant, they're recommending the vacation of this roadway. However, to avoid creating landlocked parcels, and if you were there, you'll see there's a site that's cleared, and then there's also a home that has a paved driveway to it, and those would be landlocked if we were to simply abandon it. So the city is suggesting retaining a 30-foot-wide access easement to ensure those two properties continue to have access. Additionally, due to the presence of utilities, a blanket public utility easement is proposed on all portions of Aspen Street. This is condition three in your staff report. But we would like to add a sentence to condition three. So to ensure that the access to maintain these utilities and that the utilities aren't compromised by tree roots, we're suggesting a second sentence for condition three that will state no trees or buildings are allowed in this easement. Typically, you don't do anything in the easement that would preclude the function of the easement, so clearly if tree roots were to compromise the utilities that were in the easements, those wouldn't be allowed, and you wouldn't put buildings because buildings would preclude taking a truck in to perform maintenance activities. But just to make everything really clear, the property manager requested this additional language. As you can see in the staff report, staff was able to make the seven required findings in the affirmative, subject to the conditions of approval. So with the additional sentence for condition number three, we are recommending that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors adoption of the order of abandonment for this roadway. And I'm happy to answer any questions. The property manager, Stephanie Hicks, is present.
Any questions for Hope? Commissioner?
Just curious, what prompted this abandonment? If it's just part of a cleanup, or, and also with the need to create that private easement, who would be responsible for maintaining that private easement?
Thank you. For the record, Stephanie Hicks, Real Property Manager. Actually, the installation of those barriers was part of the reason that prompted the request for the abandonment, even though the road is not currently improved, people have attempted to traverse the route anyway, and, you know, that's caused issues because it's not prepared for those purposes. While there is that initial driveway to the first interior lot, it doesn't extend beyond that, and, you know, people often will joyride or speed through there, and so that was a reason because of the complaints that we were receiving at Public Works from the adjacent property owners. The access easement will be private, so any construction of a driveway within that access easement will be owned and maintained by those property owners.
Will the barriers remain?
We will likely remove the barriers because they will be able to, at that point, fence up to the new property lines.
Questions for the applicant? Take any public comment at this time, if there's any on this item? Okay, let's bring it back to the committee for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of an abandonment, abandonment of public right-of-way application, AB-18-009, for the abandonment of Aspen Street, an area 60 feet wide by up to 570 feet long, totaling 34,121 square feet, more or less, located between Arthur Street and Clear Creek Avenue, adjacent to the properties located at 151 Arthur Street, 153 Arthur Street, 159 Arthur Street, 160 Clear Creek Avenue, 230 Clear Creek Avenue, and 5431 Aspen Street, adjacent to the assessors parcels number 009-224-03, 009-224-04, 09, 009-224-11, 009-226-05, 009-226-09, and 009-226-10, based on the seven findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Shouldn't that also include the changes made to item number three, the findings?
Including the addition of no trees in the easement sentence for number three.
For the benefit of the record, the sentence will read, "No trees or buildings are allowed in the easement."
Thank you, Commissioner Tingle. Do you have a second?
That's my motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Oh, we did, three, okay. Give them a chance to leave. Wait a minute, is that right?
That's it.
Okay. For possible action to consider a request for special use permit for Jason Mendel for a tattoo parlor on property zone retail commercial RC located at 2049 California Street, APN Hope?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. The applicant is seeking a special use permit for a tattoo parlor in the retail commercial zoning district. This use is actually currently not allowed in the retail commercial zoning district. However, on February 15, 2008, the Board of Supervisors introduced an ordinance that would allow a tattoo parlor in the retail commercial zoning district as a conditional use. It's anticipated that the board will consider the second reading tomorrow, and so we brought this forward, and it would only be effective should you make the seven findings if the board were to adopt the ordinance tomorrow to allow tattoo parlors as a conditional use in the retail commercial zoning district. The subject location is a commercial building where Jason's Bazaar is currently located. Other tenants in the building are a salon, a window cleaner's office, and a dog groomer. Commercial uses are to the north and to the south. Across the street are apartments and duplexes to the rear. The staff has reviewed the seven required findings in the staff report, and we are recommending approval, subject to the conditions in the staff report. Jason Mindel, the applicant, is present, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions for... Go ahead, Commissioner.
So even though the Planning Commission recommended that this use be allowed by right, the Board of Supervisors wants it to be a conditional use, correct, in the retail commercial?
The ordinance that the Board of Supervisors introduced identified as a conditional use in the retail commercial zoning district.
And if I remember from the last meeting, the Board of Supervisors also indicated that they would waive the fee for the special use permit.
That's correct. They did that the first time they reviewed it.
The applicant might could come forward, please. State your name, please, for the record.
Jason Mindel.
It's Mr. Mendel. Have you read the recommended conditions of approval and accept them as written?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Looks like it's going to be a pretty easy one. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
I would like to make the motion. I move to approve SUP-18-005, a special use permit to allow a tattoo parlor at a property-zoned retail commercial located at 2049 California Street, number two, APN 009-085-06, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Commissioner Stowell, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to compliment Mr. Mendel on his patience and doggedness in getting this process through. I know he had, I know it was a lot of work, and it, and...
I believe it's been to us twice, and this is the third time, so, but we got through all the hoops and we've got you hopefully where you need to be. Thank you, sir. E5, MPA-18-004, for possible action to adopt a resident... E5, MPA-18-004, for possible action, to adopt a resolution recommending to the Board of Superv... I didn't call for public comment on that. Board of Supervisors, approval of a master plan amendment for Carson City Parks and Rec and Open Space Department to amend Carson City's Unified Pathway Master Plan to add non-motorized single-track trail system addition.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. I guess this is our headliner, right? Okay. This is a request to amend the master plan. I'll give the introduction, and then I'll turn it over to the team across from me. The Board of Supervisors can amend the master plan. The Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding amendments to the master plan. The master plan is the officially adopted document that outlines Carson City's visions and goals for the future. The Unified Pathways Master Plan, which I'll refer to as the UPMP, is part of the master plan. The UPMP is a comprehensive plan for non-automobile travel routes in and around Carson City. The pathways in the plan include trails, sidewalks, bike lanes, off-street multi-use trails, and the aquatic trail related to Carson River. The proposed amendment will supplement the existing UPMP by adding language and graphics related to non-motorized, single-track trail systems. The applicant, as you may have guessed, has an in-depth presentation, so I will not go in-depth on the substance of this proposal. Having said that, in considering this amendment, the Planning Commission should consider the four findings necessary to amend the master plan. One, consistency with the master plan. Two, compatible land uses. Three, response to change conditions. And four, the desired pattern of growth. Staff has reviewed these findings in the staff report and was able to make them in the affirmative. I will also note that the application was reviewed by the Open Space Advisory Committee and the Parks and Rec Commission at joint meeting on December 18, 2017. Both voted to, and I quote, "recommend to the Planning Commission approval of the amendment to the UPMP incorporating non-motorized trail system additions to the plan's map in Chapter 12, Chapter 9 off-street trails, Chapter 11 implementation, and Appendix 3.2 public comments." All modifications that were requested by the Open Space Commission, Advisory Commission, the Parks and Rec Commission, have been incorporated into the document that was provided to the Planning Commission. The staff is recommending adoption of Resolution Number 2018-PC-R2, recommending to the Board of Supervisors approval of the MPA 18-004. Greg Bergren and Vern Cron are from the Parks, Rec, and Open Space Department, and they've been the ones I've been working with the most on this, and I'll let them introduce the other folks at the table. If you have any questions for me, I'm available, otherwise the applicants across the way.
Do you have any questions for Hope?
Okay, for the record, Greg Bergren, Trails Coordinator with Carson City Parks, Recreation, and Open Space. And I'd like to introduce, on my left, Mark Kimbrough with the Eagle Valley Trails Committee, and on my right is Jeff Potter, also with the Eagle Valley Trails Committee, and they have a presentation for you.
You're on. This is great. First of all, I want to say I'm kind of jealous. I was on the Planning Commission back in the... Teenagers tell me back in the late 1900s, when Lee, I think, was right out of college, and him and I both had our full head of hair. He was working for Walt Sullivan, and a lot of development during those days, and then it just went into nothing, and we'd get excited about a metal storage container coming up on the agenda. So I'd love to see the agenda you guys have had here lately, and all of the growth in the city, and all of the fun... That's a fun part of the job, is to see all that. So I missed that and enjoyed that, and loved seeing Lee move up in the system. He's a great person, and then Hope I worked with, and I'm very pleased with Hope's. So I'll start that with my presentation. So you'll see a curtain there behind the curtain. Jeff and I have been past the baton. This is a... A whole lot of people are involved with this, and I'll talk a little bit about this process that we did. Actually, in the audience tonight, there's a couple of them, Donovan Verzin and Brett Long, were some of... These are the ones who spent a lot of time, and Eric Ingbar, Lin Zong, and Shannon Hottaway, and Toby Welburn, are all people that played a big role in this, that are all professionals in the field. And then my partner, Jeff, who has been given a wall full of awards, and some even national. I'm proud to sit and have the privilege to make the presentation with him tonight. We kind of team these, so that you have a chance for both perspectives. So the next slide is the grassroots. This group is actually a truly grassroots movement out of this community. We just made a presentation to the Open Space last night for a possible acquisition of property that's really key to some of the trails over here on the west side. But my first assignment... One of my first assignments at Open Space was to go out and GPS the trails on the west side over here, because they wanted to build a brochure out. So I did that, and I came back and looked at a parcel map and found that most of them were on private property, which creates some serious problems about putting a map out on private property. So that was the catalyst that moved us to here, to get these folks gathered to move this forward, and Jeff will speak to some of that, too. So we formed the Eagle Valley Trail Committee. Anybody could join, and on those pictures you see up there, we had representation from all these different groups, all the way across, the bikers, the mountain bikers, the equestrians, the families, and people with dog walkers, that were all part of this group. And something that kind of leads into this, I used to be part of what was called the Sierra Front Recreation Coalition, which was made up of leadership from the Forest Service, Carson City Parks and Rec, Warshaw County Parks, BLM. And one of our primary goals was trails, because they were concerned about the properties being bought that are private along the Sierra Front, and people in this public state don't realize that there are private property out there. And that as these developments occur, all of a sudden, they're getting slammed out of the access to the Sierra. So this... We actually helped do some of the seed money to move this group along a little bit. So there's a history of concerns for that, of the properties on the Sierra Front. So I wanted to dazzle you with a really nice graphic here. And with... Trails are very unique, and they're really fun to work on sometimes. They go through so many boundaries, and so many different types of land, so many challenges, riparian areas. It's not uncommon for you to spend five years out studying where the trail is going to go before you ever turn a shovel, because there's so many intricacies to trails with historic, because you're moving through so much ground. You'll have ancient Indian sites, you'll have western sites, you just have all these things that slow your process down. So you've got to collaborate with all these people. So before we moved this grassroots forward, we did go to the Land Management Agency, and all we asked was a blessing from them. Just bless this movement of the grassroots and trust us. And they did. They trusted us to move forward with some planning on trails in this community. And then we had nonprofits involved. One of them I see here tonight, Silver Saddle Ranch is here tonight, that were part of this group that we met whenever we needed to, to move this forward. We had businesses, and one of the biggest supporters was Carson City Tourism, Joel Dunn gave us a lot of support for graphic work and doing our collateral. We had some really nice collateral to hand out to people with our goals, and so that they could see we're a very well-run, respected group of people. Then on the right, you'll see all the agencies you have to work with. And one of the cool things that happened during this process is State Lands has a history of not being very friendly to discussions about trails on their properties. So they were able to start at least talking about that, and we're in... And we're doing that right now, and hoping in the future to work some of those details out. So we worked through State Parks property up here, we worked through BLM on the east side, and the Forest Service, and then Carson City's Open Space, which was a key player in what we were doing. So and then we worked with the Western Nevada College, which we thought would be a good audience for us, and they actually have a... They're the trailhead in that paved pathway right behind them that goes up into the property we're looking at. So that's how we started building the collaboration, so that we could put the plan together. So I want to talk about this for a sec, because to me, this is a planning element. This is soft trails versus hard trails. Hard trails are your transportation side, which are your paved bikeways, sidewalks, paved... You have bike lanes that are just striped. Transportation has a requirement, and you guys can... I think it's every five years by law, they have to update their plan to get federal money to build those facilities out there. The rec side doesn't need that. So many years ago, and I can't remember when the UPMP was done, this community decided, well, let's put soft trails and hard trails together. And that's why it's called the United Pathway Master Plan. The word pathway had to be used, because they were talking about trails and pavement, so that was a term that could be used, so you could do both. So soft trails get ignored in a lot of communities. There's not anything in the master plan to protect them, so if a development comes in, it's hard to get a trail put in through it to get access, because it's not in your master plan to support the... You guys sitting there saying, well, it's in the master plan that there's a trail that should be through this. So this... Interstation has all the money, which is always nice, so sometimes you can combine the money and get a little bit more. Recreation has a grant program. So this is unique, that putting soft trails actually in your master plan and allow the community to review that, if you have a private landowner, or a subdivision, or just a few homes being built. The trails is a component, and essential to the community to have those access and to have movement through wherever they're going to be. So this is great. I'm actually working with Reno now to solve that problem with them now. We're working on a soft trails plan, and we'll see how that goes in that very unique situation of the counties and two cities and different players in there. So we're working on that. So this is all about quality of life, and people in this community voted that. So we kind of have some responsibility as citizens, as a community, to support the fact that people are saying, I'll pay a quarter cent tax to protect the open space and trails in this community. So this map and trails actually support them. We did the full-scale job to make sure we could support that, that these peoples are paying every day when you buy anything in this town, you're supporting that. So one of the things that we did, and you'll see in the audience tonight, there isn't 100 private landowners here, which can happen. I've been there. I have a wonderful experience in my life where I did some planning in Incline Village, and there's some trails in the community up there, and they had like 200 people show up and wanted to hang me. And all we did was an inventory, because they wanted to protect their, what they thought was private property, which isn't in Incline. So I've been there. What we did is we went out and talked to the private landowners and sent them that letter, because that's a landmine that you can... That can screw up your whole planning process, if private landowners find some reason that they're not comfortable with the trails that you're proposing. So every private landowner that we proposed trails on or were existing, we sent a letter to and said, if you want to opt-out, opt-out, and we'll leave you off the maps. And none of them did, and one called us that we're hopefully going to work out to get that piece of property in the future, that asked that we respect his private property. So that was nice, that we didn't have that little surprise come later. So because this being a grassroots movement, we weren't tied underneath the same restrictions sometimes agencies are. But we spent a lot of time making sure they were involved, and actually, the OHVs that I haven't put in here, we invited them and made a proposal that we would not shut any OHV trail down, and that we would share our maps with them. So we did a good upfront job. And then when it comes to private landowners, that's also the planned unit developments that come into you. I'm talking about them, too, that if they do come in, if it's in the master plan and it's in that area, that a trail should be there, or does exist, and we can work with them and relocate it. We don't care about the relocation. One of the nightmares that can happen is I consulted on a job over outside of Sparks at Spanish Springs, and they were building trails called Bridle Pass Subdivision, and I was a consultant. And what they did is they put all of their utilities in it, and they made drainage ditches out of all of them, but said that was their trail system. So and then there was a situation in Douglas County where they said, yeah, we'll give you an easement. So they gave them an easement 10-foot wide up a 30% slope. So you'd have to have like 500 switchbacks to get it. So this plan will ensure that those types of things don't happen with the planning process, and they're upfront with those things. So that point's made with that. The process, we went through a process to make sure we were doing this in a very comfortable way, so we could bring it to the boards and the open spaces and the planning commissions, that they feel comfortable in our process. So we did a whole lot of mapping and evaluations of those trails, and then we did some prescoping, which is a normal thing you do before you do an EA. An EA is, if you're not familiar, that's what you have to do, even for trails. That little 24-inch wide tread that you put through the forest needs a full EA, and before you do that, usually you go prescope, you ask the public what they want. So we did a public survey, which we have some great results from, that identifies what our users are like in this community, that also showed people from outside the community come in, and if they walk their dog, what time they go, all these really great things. Then we did some public workshops as a grassroots, and then the agency were invited, and they participated. Open Space was there, and actually, State Lands came to them, and the Forest Service was invited, and State Parks came to some, where people came in, looked at maps, and we talked. And we didn't put any desire lines on our maps when we did this. We let the public come in and do those, and desire lines is where they want trails to be, so that we weren't the advocates for new trails. We let the public be the advocates for the trails. And so then we did all that work, and then we wrote the report, which is easier said than done. That's why this process started in 2013, and these are all volunteers doing this, except for a little bit of paid staff time. So it took us five years to get the report squared away and done, with all the homework that was done, and all these volunteers working, and they have a private life, too. So we wrote the plan, and then the dream was is to move that forward and do a master plan update, which is where we're at today. And I saw some pretty heavy reading. I don't know how many I read. I was going to quiz you on page 28, and that's more than you'll ever know about trails or ever want to know about trails, but I was impressed by the package. So I'm going to pass over to Jeff to finish up this presentation. Thank you.
Well, time's up, and I think that ends our presentation.
I talked too long.
For the record, my name is Jeff Potter. I'm with the Eagle Valley Trail Committee, and I'm also with... What's my new title, Randy? Technical advisor for Muscle Power. So our theme throughout this was sustainable system trails. And what a sustainable system trail is, is a trail that's designed with the user needs in consideration, but primarily is low impact on the environment. And there's many ways and guidelines that we use to do that, but the number one thing is get the water off the trail. And so one of Muscle Power's mantras is sustainable trails, and that's what we go out to do, build, maintain, and design these really for the community. And next, which brings us to the recommendations that are in the packet that you have in front of you. We gathered all of our trail user groups together, being Silver Saddle Ranch, which is in the audience tonight, and they were a big help with this. Brett Long, who is with the running group and also on the Parks and Rec Commission, helped us tremendously. And what we did was, we couldn't possibly walk all of these trails at one time and find out where they were. We reached out to our partners, and they provide us with all that information, because everybody loves to track what they're doing. So we had all that information available, and plus, you know, our own database that had it. And so Toby Welborn compiled all that, came up with the database, and then we divvied out that information to our groups, and went and evaluated these trails. And through that process of sustainability, we came to our recommendations, which we hope to be included into the UPMP. And our recommendations are tied directly to the UPMP. Stuff that was already on there from 2006, we overlaid on what we compiled, and then adjusted those lines also, so everything meshed. And we don't want to duplicate anything, and we're really proud of the process that got us to this portion. And as Mark said, it took us five years to get to where we are now, but we didn't let that, waiting for this to get to where it is now. To stop us, we continue to move forward. So we're still trying to get... Working with the BLM to get Centennial Park Trails into the system. We're working with Greg and Ann to get the Capital to State Park Trail going, which we hope to have that done, well, in five years, but that's optimistic. And we're also, as Mark said, we're pursuing to hopefully purchase a piece, a prime piece on the west side that will add to the west side trails. So and, you know, we couldn't get here with a lot of support from the community, and from Greg Bergren, Vern Cron, Mark, Ann, and especially Jennifer Budge and Hope Sullivan for, you know, getting us to where we are now, taking this off from the grassroots level and bringing it to the Planning Commission. So thank you. Oh, and one thing, sorry. And one thing we're very proud of is the biggest compliment that we could have received is that we received the Outstanding Rural Plan Award from the American Planning Association for this report that was developed. And Mark?
We're done.
Thank you very much. Just along that line, when we were doing, a while back, we approved the development over by the theater for the housing, et cetera, that was going in over there, apartments and stuff. And part of that was the fact that there were trails behind that, so that the applicant had to leave access through. Is that something you folks oversee and observe to make sure that's done, or is that handled separately? separately?
Essentially, what you're referring to is in the UPMC right now. It's Carson Hills Apartments. So, what happens, and what Mark alluded to, is once these additional trails and the policies associated with them are part of the master plan, what happens is every single development application that comes in is routed over to essentially Vern Cron. And he then, he'll review it against the UPMC. He'll identify if there's any policies in the UPMC or trails in the UPMC that are in that geographic area. So, it was based on the UPMC that Vern called out, that we needed the trailhead parking and the ability to cross through the complex to get to the public trail system. So, I think that's what you're alluding to, and that's directly-
Yeah, because I remember we had to allocate some parking spaces and that for that, so that the people wouldn't have to walk all the way around the development or whatever. Questions for the commissioner?
Just, are there any, and I don't know if it's in the report, I didn't see it, any updated statistics in terms of where we are, in terms of existing trails versus proposed trails now with these additions and changes?
This is a policy-level document, so we don't have in this report or anything within the master plan that identifies existing trails, how much we have, how much we started out with. You know, that is something that, over time, I think we're going to want to develop, because I think it's going to be very important, especially as we move forward with the future update of the entire master plan. I think that's going to be a great piece of information to have, is kind of where we started in 2006, and where we are eventually in 2018 and beyond. So, no, it's a very good question.
Actually, it's in the written document, we have some data. How much was private, how much Forest Service, how much BLM. We didn't put the desire lines into that, but we do have a lot of statistics, what's current, and how many miles total within the valley, which is pretty, how many miles in the valley is pretty impressive, actually.
So, I believe the figure, I'll just round it off if you don't mind. We have 45 miles of single track in Carson City, and roughly about 17 miles of that is legal. The rest of that is what we would call non-system trails or social trails. And I believe 110 miles of double track. But I don't have, I haven't found that page yet.
Any other questions? Any call for public comment? Okay, thank you very much. Would take any public comment on this item at this time. Is there anyone out in the audience wishes to make comment on this?
Yeah, we, staff did have a presentation, if you want to go with that too. No, no, that's okay. I mean, if, sometimes less is more. I've been told that sometimes less is more, so. But what we were going to do, if the commission would so desire, is we can actually walk you through the changes, the specific changes within the plan, and we would be able to do that. So, I'm just going to kind of lead this off, and then we'll turn that over to Greg. He was the one that worked very closely with the Eagle Valley Trail Committee, overlaying their plan into ours and making it work in what you have before you today. The last time the UPMC, the UPMC was adopted in 2006. In 2007, the UPMC was amended with the information related to the aquatic trail along the Carson River. We have found, as Hope has indicated, it has become a very excellent document for us to be able to use in the development of keeping our trail system cohesive and connected. So, as we move, the Carson Hills Apartment is a great example, but even the example of the Carson City Freeway Multi-Use Trail, that starts on the north end of town and is eventually going to end up hopefully down at the Pete Livermore Sports Complex, and eventually into Douglas County, that is also on this plan. So, there's a lot of variety of plans interconnecting throughout the community, and this plan guides it all. And as Hope and I talk about it all the time, this is not one of those plans that sits on the shelf. I'm opening up that plan daily and providing Hope comments, and we're discussing that. So, it's a, it's a very utilitarian document, and I think is really, and adding this component to it with the single-track trail system will do the same thing that it's done for the hard trails in this town, being able to have a unified way to look at the entire thing. Since 2007, this would be, yeah, since 2007, the demand for the non-motorized single-track trails has been increasing. We have seen that happen, not only from individual residents, but of course, from this grassroots movement that has come forth, you know, and has produced this plan. The Cultural and Tourism Authority recognizes the importance of trails too. Both Mark and Jeff alluded to that. Specifically, we were able to, because of the trail system and the network that we did have currently in place, we were be, we were able to get, or the authority was able to get the Carson City Off-Road Mountain Bike Races here, and they'll be here for another couple more years. So, we're real excited about that, and being able to address that.
Can you double-click?
Oh, oh, it's okay.
Tech advisor.
Tech advisor.
I don't do that.
There we go. So, again, the Cultural and Tourism Authority recognizes the importance of outdoor recreation to our economy and promoting the trails, and as Mark also mentioned, the quality of life in this community. So, for both visitors and of course, our residents here in town. So, we're very proud of what the Eagle Valley Trail Committee has done, and what this is going to mean into the future with this being incorporated into the master plan. The last slide that I get to talk on tonight is that we just again wanted to reiterate that this has been through a process. We started the adoption process with both the Open Space Advisory Committee and the Parks and Recreation Commission. Hope, earlier in your presentation, read the actual motion. I'm not going to do that again, but it has been to both committees, and both committees have made this recommendation to the planning commission to move it forward for your consideration. Now, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Greg. He will take you through the individual line items that are changing within the documents. So.
Okay. For the record, Greg Bergren, Trails Coordinator, and good evening, commissioners. So, in order to fulfill the goals of the, that the joint commission, or joint meeting, the Open Space Advisory Commission and the Parks and Rec Commission asked us to do, we staff conducted a detailed review of all the chapters of the most recent version of the UPMC, and we collaborated with members of the Eagle Valley Trail Committee to draft the amendments necessary to amend the plan. And so, I'm going to walk you through each of those proposed amendments, and feel free to ask questions as we go through them. So, the first amendment is to Chapter 9, Off-Street Trails, on page 9-4, and we added a bullet point to subsection 9.2.1, and that is to add a trail difficulty rating system. A trail difficulty rating system helps users to make informed decisions and encourages visitors to use trails that match their skill level. And we chose the rating system that is used by the International Mountain Bike Association, or IMBA, because it's widely recognized, and it's applicable to all, to hikers, runners, and equestrians, as well as mountain bikers. It is a system that's used by other communities for their trail systems. For example, Bend, Oregon, and Moab, Utah both use this one. Okay, the other, the next chapter that we amended is Chapter 11, Implementation, and that begins on pages, on page 11-4, Increasing Off-Street Single-Track Opportunities. In the first paragraph, we give a brief history of the Eagle Valley Trail Committee. We felt that was important for context. And in paragraph 2, we cite several references for standards for trail design, construction, and maintenance. And these are references that we chose because they emphasize our basic principles, which are to promote safety, protect natural resources. We want to design trails that are fun, interesting, and attractive to a variety of users, and that are sustainable over the long term. And then, most importantly, beginning on pages, on page 11-5, we list specific recommendations for single-track opportunities, and these are derived from the Eagle Valley Trail Committee report. The opportunities are prioritized as Tier 1 and Tier 2, but I'd like to emphasize that we have a disclaimer there, that the priorities we modified as opportunities present themselves based on, in the form of funding, easements, partnerships, or public needs. The tiers were derived by the Eagle Valley Trail Committee based on their criteria, which included the public input. Okay, and then, we move, we want to, Implementation Continued Amendment, subsection 11.2.5, which explains the importance of volunteer organizations. We couldn't do any of this without our volunteers, some of who are here tonight, and the value of what the EVCT did for us is, some communities are paying to have that kind of work done, and it costs many tens of thousands of dollars. And I'd also like to mention that in the past year, we had over 150 volunteers that contributed over 1,800 hours of their time working on single-track trails, and the value to the city, you know, was over $40,000. Okay, so in, we also deleted subsection, the second subsection, 11.2.6, which referenced the Tahoe Rim Trail Association, and is made redundant with the rewrite of 11.2.5. There was, in the original edition of the UPMC, there was a typo, and they had two subsections, 11.2.6. And then, we also added subsection 11.2.10 to explain the importance of partnering with adjacent counties to accomplish regional connectivity with our trail system. And then, we move on to the maps, and the maps are, there's four maps, and the first one is an overview of the entire city, and the three subsequent maps each show a section of the city. And if, on the subsequent maps, if you look at the legend in the upper left-hand corner, there's a graphic there that shows which portion of the city is blown up on that map. So, with the maps, we updated two things. One is land ownership, just to show what's current, and then we updated the single-track trails. And solid orange indicates the existing legal trails, and the dashed orange lines indicate what's proposed.
Is there an app for that?
Is there an app for that?
Yeah.
Well, actually, we're working with the Public Works to put this on the GIS system for the city, so it'll be available there. And then, also, we're working with the Culture and Tourism Authority to develop an interactive map that'll be available to users. Okay, and then, lastly, we updated the appendix to add the public input comments from the trail workshops that were conducted by the Eagle Valley Trail Committee. And so, we made the same presentation on December 18th to the Open Space Advisory Committee and the Parks and Recreation Commission, and they jointly recommended approval to the planning commission, and so, we're here tonight with that, and we're hoping that you move it on to the board of supervisors. And that's all I have. Thank you, unless you have questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Stowe?
The stretch, the people bicycle on, even though it's incredibly dangerous, of Curry Street from South 10th Street going south to Cochise. I see it's in the map there, and that was, I think, something that came up during the workshops. Is there any idea of what it would take to really create anything on-street in that area?
If you're, if you're talking about something on the street, that's not a part of this amendment, because we're only addressing single-track natural surface trails. That would be off, off of the street. So, the trails that are, that are on the street are the, the, the more urban trails, that's, it's a different part of the UPMC that we're not addressing with this amendment.
If I could add to that, with the vintage property that has, that has come before this commission, we have had conversations with the developer and the landowners about doing something either along the road or a multi-use path through that section. And so, that's still kind of, kind of a work in progress to some degree, but it is a serious, it is a serious concern of the city, both at the public works level and our concern as well. So, we are very familiar with that whole concern over there.
If I remember from the vintage project, there was a discussion when they came before us, that whether it was going to be inside the property or just outside the fence, but they were going to have access east and west through there, so, right?
Yes, and that's something that we'll continue to watch as that vintage development moves forward, yes.
Any other comments? I just, the amount of work that has gone into this, and what all you folks have done is just to be commended. I mean, it's amazing what you've put together, and I can see why it's taken a number of years to do this as well, but you should all be complimented on the job well done. Okay, we'll try public comment again if there's any at this time, since we've now heard all the, all the presentation. If you come forward and state your name for us, please.
For the record, Donna Inversen, member of Eagle Valley Trails Committee, Board of Directors for Muscle Powered, and just for transparency, I'm also on the Open Space Advisory Committee, although I'm not here representing them tonight. I've been part of this project from day one. It's been a big project, but I think Greg pointed out that the financial impact that we provided in this, we've saved the city, the state, Forest Service BLM, a lot of money. In fact, they've thanked us because they've wanted to know what was there, but they've never had the opportunity of the staff to go find it. And I think the other thing I want to point out is that this is definitely a grassroots thing. This came from the bottom up, and in the process of pulling this together, we pulled together all of these different groups that were here in town but weren't talking to each other. So, now, the equestrians, the runners, the hikers, and the bicyclists are all talking to each other. Unfortunately, the OHV aren't organized and really didn't come to the table. We would have liked to see them come to the table. But yes, you know, I really hope you do send this forward. Thank you.
Well, and I don't know when you found the time for this, because you also were so vastly involved with the freeway coming through, and seeing that Muscle Powered and all that was involved with the trails along the freeway, et cetera. So, you've been doing double duty for a number of years, it looks like.
Just, just for future reference, my next project is to recreate the entire historic Virginian Truckee Railway as rail trails.
Wow. That's more energy than I do, I'm sure.
Hi, I'm Johanna Foster, and I am a member of the Muscle Powered Board. And I did not move to Nevada, well, I hadn't been here yet when this was all being formed, but I'm a very willing volunteer, and I'd like to add, just, I support everything that's been said, and to add, that there are people who now come to Carson City because of the opportunities for recreation, and you just, it's a win-win. I think, Mark, you said that when you were on the commission, it was exciting to have one shed, you know, on the, on the vote. Well, you guys have these single-track trails, and you'll be voting for a lot more things for Carson City. Thank you.
Didn't this, the Epic Trail, the Epic Ride was part of this draw, was this, I'm sure, that brought them here to begin with?
Yes, from what I understood, that was part of their, coming here was the expansion of our system up into the lake for more opportunities.
Hi, my name's Larry Marinell, and I would like to say that one of the reasons I moved to Carson City was because of the open space and the trails that are here. And I've since joined Muscle Power, and I work for Jeff on the trails. And this would go a long way to ensure that the trails in Carson City stay the way we have them now, because only 17 miles are legal. So, yeah, this, I strongly urge you to bring this forward. I think it's a really good thing for the city. Thank you.
Anyone else?
For the record, my name's Nancy Santos, and I'm the president of Friends of Silver Saddle, and I just wanted to thank these guys for all the hard work that they've done. We helped out some, but we've got a bunch of trails on the ranch property too, and this is a great- this is a great addition to what this community has.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll bring it back to the board, and, and I'm, oh, or I was going, okay, if you'd like to. I was going to make a motion if there's no further discussion.
I have a comment. I always have comments. Elise, Elise Monroy, for the record, I would just like to say, I appreciated the public comment, and I'd just like to acknowledge that I didn't move to Carson City because of the open space or the trail, trail systems, but I have absolutely developed an affinity and love for our trail system since I've been here. And whenever people ask me what I love about Carson City, I say our open space and our trail system. You should all be very proud of the work that you've done, and as a resident of the city, I'd just like to say thank you, and I'm excited to support this recommendation tonight.
Well, and I recommend the motion. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2018-PC-R-2, recommending to the Board of Supervisors approval of MPA-18-004, a master plan amendment for Parks and Recreation and Open Space Directors to amend the master plan to add language and graphics related to a non-motorized single-track trail system based on the findings contained in the staff report.
A second.
We have a motion and a second.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sometimes I used to have people come and be positive.
Yes, be happy. That's amazing. I'm going to save that. I'm not throwing that one away.
I'm going to keep the good copy.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'll break it down when I get home.
The maps and the comments in the back, the best. If there was a way you could put that in an app, so that when you're out there.
Well, it sounds like they're working on that.
That would be wonderful. I went with my sister-in-law the other day when we did the Blue Line on the phone app.
Oh, really?
It's fun, but it's, needs a little more work. Because it gives, it doesn't give you the addresses until you get to the property. You can get there.
Okay. I didn't realize he was, all, Mark was all involved with that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, moving on. E6, MPA-18-007, for possible action to adopt a resolution recommending to the Board of Supervisors approval of a master plan amendment for Tahoe 4 LLC to change the land use designation from industrial mixed-use, industrial to mixed-use residential on property located on South Astro Drive in the vicinity of Draco Way, APN 008-521-54-55, 008-521-89-90, 008-522-16-17-18,
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. As the chair identified, this is a request to amend the master plan. The Board of Supervisors can amend the master plan, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. The master plan, as I stated on the last item, is the officially adopted document that outlines Carson City's vision and goals for the future. The subject property, which I have on the board and is outlined, is in the Eastern Portal Virginian Truckee Railroad Gateway specific plan area, which I'll refer to as the VNT Spa. The purpose of the VNT Spa is to provide a cohesive development within the area, to create a gateway into Carson City, to provide for economic development opportunities along the highway corridor, to protect visual resources associated with the VNT Railroad, and to encourage public and private partnerships to facilitate economic development, to create public access trails and recreational opportunities. Policy 1.5 of the VNT Spa addresses the Draco Way vicinity land use change. Specifically, it states, "The land use designation of the property in the vicinity of Draco Way, east of the VNT Railroad alignment, shall be changed by Carson City from industrial to mixed-use commercial and/or mixed-use residential upon removal of the old landfill identified on the site, or with the approved engineering controls in accordance with NDEP standards upon development of the property." By way of background, when the site was designated as industrial, it was primarily due to the condition of the landfill. The industrial designation was essentially a placeholder until these engineering controls for the landfill had been approved by NDEP. These controls in the form of a remedial action plan have been approved by NDEP now, subject to comments, and you have the letter from NDEP in your packet. Given this, a designation for the mixed-use residential consistent with Policy 1.5 is appropriate. Chris Baker from Manhard is here representing the application, and he called me about six months ago and said, "Hope, is the city ready to go forward with this redesignation?" And I said, "Well, no, it's not on my to-do list." He said, "Okay, I'll take it forward." So although the policy says Carson City will bring it forward, the applicant is bringing it forward in advance of the city, but the substance is the same. When you consider amending the master plan, you're considering four findings: consistency with the master plan, compatible land use, response to changed conditions, and a desired pattern of growth. The staff has reviewed these findings in the staff report and was able to make them in the affirmative. Having said that, I want to speak to the compatibility finding. You also have, have received a letter from Mr. Harrison questioning the compatibility, should this become residential with the industrially designated areas and uses to the west. I think that's a fair question, but I do want to point out that the requested designation is for mixed-use residential as opposed to a straight residential use. The next step for the applicant is to capture the zoning, should the, should the master plan be amended, because right now the zoning is an industrial zoning district. So when you consider the zoning map amendment, the commission's going to consider finding number two, which is that the, the proposed amendment will provide for land uses compatible with existing adjacent land uses and will not have a detrimental impact on other properties in the vicinity. So I believe that the mixed-use residential, given it's not a pure residential, it's mixed-use, you have non-residential uses with the residential, is not by its nature incompatible with the industrial. I think there's opportunity for compatibility, and I think when that comes before you as a zoning map amendment, or should it come forward as a PUD, that would be the opportunity to validate the compatibility, because you will have that finding as far as the zoning map amendment. So again, I, I find that Mr. Harrison's letter brings up valid comments, but I'm not certain that the master plan, or I actually believe the master plan request is not, it can be compatible, because it's mixed-use, and I think his points are well-taken and things that we'll continue to monitor as we look at zoning map amendment and future development of the site. With that, the staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 2018-PC-R1, recommending that the Board of Supervisors approve Master Plan 18007. And again, the primary reason is this is exactly what the policy of the master plan says we will do in, in specific plan one point, Policy 1.5. Again, Chris Baker from Manhard is present and representing the application, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Hope, do we know, first, I'd compliment Mr. Harrison on bringing his concerns forward. I mean, he just doesn't want to be a problem down the road or whatever it sounds like, so, but do we know where his property is located as far as where this goes? Across the road, or, go ahead.
I have the cursor on, on the vicinity.
It's the southern most.
Okay. Okay, so the.
He's quite a ways here.
Well, he's adjacent to the boundary of the area.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Question for Hope. So then, in the scheme of things, we approve the master plan amendment, and then we come back and look at, and take on the zoning. We don't do the, any of these concurrently, we're going to do one at a time.
As the application has been submitted, it's been submitted only as an amendment to the master plan, so you don't have an amendment to the zoning map before you, but that would logically be the thing that comes next.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Stowe?
I, I've got some, a lot of concerns about this, but I have a question to the applicant, so. In the NDEP letter, they obviously had some other requests in terms of approving the remedial action plan. So two questions. One, I don't understand why the NDEP letter talked about, the project involves the construction of a road. I don't know that NDEP realized what Mr. Serper was planning with this property. Number two, I wanted to know what the status is with the follow-up that NDEP required for the property.
Chris Baker, Manhard Consulting here on behalf of the applicant. So to answer your first question, the road is actually a road that cuts through on the northern boundary that would access the site. It's just, it's, it's essentially either an extension of the existing Draco Way to access the site. I think, to put it in context, you really have to understand where, the landfill doesn't, the previous landfill does not take up the entire site. It only takes up about 15 acres of the 112 acres, and it's really isolated along the northern boundary. So to access the site, an existing public road would have to be extended through the portion that was once the landfill, and so that was their concern. All the proposals that we have brought forward, we're kind of in the process of the conceptual plan stage now, there, for secondary access purposes, a road does need to go through that. We are not proposing any development on that previous landfill portion, but for access purposes, a road would need to go through there. So that's the road that they're referencing in the letter. And the second question as far as where are we, we're working with them now. The, the big issue was they wanted some follow-up as far as a SWIP, but all of that needs to be in concert with an actual land plan. So until we nail down a land plan, which we're, again, in the process of now, we're obviously working with NDEP on that land plan, and we're working with staff, we've actually submitted a conceptual map. And then, as you know, part of that is reaching out to adjacent property owners and making sure, you know, there's necessary buffering and, and other things. So again, I'm, I'm glad that that letter was brought to our attention. We have worked with a lot of the surrounding property owners, but that one had not been contacted to date, so that's something we will address. And to kind of, I guess, expand on where we are in the process, again, as far as the, the conceptual map goes, the northern boundary, for the most part, is going to be left vacant as open space, and we're working, we've reached out to Carson City Parks to talk about opportunities there. And then there is also, on the whole western boundary, there's actually a lot of utility easements that make it undevelopable. So that's where that property that, we abut the property where the, the letter was, was submitted. Not to mention, there's some identified open space and other things, just because we do not feel residential immediately adjacent to some of those industrial uses is compatible, so we're going to build some buffering into our plan. So that's kind of where we are. The next steps for us would be to identify a conceptual plan, reach out to the public, and then the conceptual plan, or the, any mapping and the zoning map amendment would come forward at the same time, and we would base the zoning off of the plan. So if, for some reason, this is approved tonight, what would end up happening is, the next step for us would be a zoning map amendment and any necessary mapping is, is, by the way, a tentative map that you would see as one item moving forward.
I have lots of concerns, but I'll wait for the other members to.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So is the plan to submit a conceptual plan and zoning map amendment for the entire parcel? Or the entire, the section that will be remaster planned or amended?
So, so right now, it is one parcel, 112 acres, and as, as Hope stated in her staff report in her presentation, again, this designation change is just complying with the 2006 update. It was identified as best used at that time as mixed-use. The concerns over the state of the property being, a portion of it being a former landfill, and that NDEP hadn't signed off on anything was kind of the holdup. And then, you know, as I understand it, it is, that industrial designation was just placed there as a, as a true placeholder until that action plan could be approved by, by NDEP. As most of you are aware, the next question would be, well, why didn't this happen before 200, you know, why is it 2018 and that plan was updated in 2006? There really wasn't a demand for any housing or any other mixed-use development in Carson City until now, so there was really no urgency to redesignate the property.
Okay. My, my concern is, is that, that you bring it all in at once, rather than coming in with pieces of it, you know, you know, a tentative map for this section of it and another tentative map for this section.
The plan would be to come in with everything at once.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Stowe?
Two things. One, obviously, it's consistent with the master plan as it was adopted in 2006, but from there, I disagree. And I think part of the reason is that when the master plan was done in 2006, it, it obviously was showing an activity center, and the notion being that VNT would come through all the way and have that activity center. So the idea probably being that there would be some great mixed-use activity center happening. When you go out to that area, it's, it's very industrial, you've got transmission lines. I don't know that that area, it stayed industrial since 2006. So if this was a master plan amendment to change it to some kind of commercial zoning, and of course, the problem is mixed-use commercial has no equivalent zoning districts right now, but if it was a proposal, a master plan amendment to change it from industrial to some kind of commercial without residential, I, I would see no problem with that. I do have a problem in, in thinking that this is an appropriate location for future residential. It's, it's out in the middle of nowhere, it's got a huge transmission line going through there, you've got industrial areas all the way around it, plus the public lands to the, to the east and the, and the south. And I don't see, unless, again, if staff can inform me that VNT is going to be coming through there, and, and it is still going to be this great mixed-use area, that that area is going to stay predominantly industrial, and that, thinking that this is appropriate for mixed-use commercial with residential, I, I can't see that. I, I, maybe I'm missing something, but I don't see that residential is appropriate land use in that area. Commercial, yes, but not any kind of residential in that area. I don't think it's appropriate.
At one point, wasn't there a discussion out by the VNT of they, we looked at a Asian museum or something was going to go in out there at one point and that sort of thing?
In, in terms of the VNT, I did a little bit of research on that to figure out the status of the VNT, and I met with Nick Morano, who's vice chair of the VNT Commission, and due to financial issues, right now, there, there is not a plan to extend it.
Initially, it was going to come back down by the river, I believe, and back in there at one point, and they were going to do all kinds of stuff back in there. So that's all on hold at this time? Oh, I just, originally, it was going to.
No, you're exactly right. It was going to go down to the Carson River, and actually, if you look at the map and the master plan, it, it depicts it.
Other comments or questions for the applicant?
Just a, a quick comment in response. Yes, the, the area to the west is industrial. The area to the north is actually, I believe, zoned, well, but isn't it a mixed-use master plan? Yeah. It already has a mixed-use master plan on it. Obviously, there's open space to the west, and again, I don't know if you've been out there lately, it, it's not functioning, although there's industrial buildings, many of them are vacant. It's not functioning, although there's industrial buildings, many of them are vacant. Many of the vacant properties are for sale or for lease. It's not a thriving industrial area. So to that point, this has been industrially designated and has had the potential to become an industrial site forever, and there's been no takers. So I think that, combined with, you know, the desire of staff in 2006 and the Policy 1.5 in the master plan that states that this is earmarked for mixed-use development, I think kind of those things all combined kind of would lend to this change.
Commissioner Tingle?
So the, the area that was previously the landfill, would that, you're saying that wouldn't, would not be developed?
Correct.
Would, okay, so.
Correct. That'd be left as, as open space.
Okay, so no improvements made to it as far as shrubs, grass, you know, anything like, just to?
Well, it would be undeveloped, but again, we're working, we've just kind of started the process with Carson City Parks to see what that is. Truthfully, that could become some sort of amenity for the city as a whole and be potentially turned over to parks. If that's not a route that is desirable by Carson City, if there is some sort of an HOA, that could be, you know, open space for the HOA. The action plan that was approved by NDP discusses of capping that, so there's no real impact. But no, there wouldn't be any development on that, on that property whatsoever.
Commissioner Shalana?
Can, can you point out on the map where that landfill was? Or do we have it in one of our?
If you look at the book you have on page three.
Page three?
Is an aerial photo, and I'll loan Chris' mine so he can speak to it.
It's tough. It's actually not, when you look at the aerial, it's not the disturbed portion. It's actually the portion that, yeah, it's, it's.
From my, so if I'm generally circling, circling, it's in this portion of the property? You said the north?
Yeah, it's, it's essentially.
Start with breakfast.
It's essentially where the cursor is, kind of from this road to approximately that parcel line there, and probably only about half of that. So again, if you're looking at the whole parcel, that's nearly, that's a little over 112 acres, and this is approximately 15 acres of that. So it's, it's probably, if you just kind of drew the, drew a rectangle with that access road as the westernmost, and then the easternmost is, is the, the property line there, it's about half of that rectangle.
Commissioner Tingle?
So residents, assuming that it does become mixed-use residential, coming off of Highway 50 on Draco Way, is that the ingress and egress for that area with that?
That's the, that's the current ingress, egress. Again, we're working with NDOT, and we're working through the conceptual map process. We're not there yet. We don't think that will be the ultimate ingress, egress. No.
That would be bad.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't work. There are, there's a lot of vacant industrial there that hasn't been cleaned up. There is one industrial use there. So no, that is not going to be the front door by any means.
Well, and I'm not, I'm not worried aesthetically. I'm worried from a traffic safety issue coming up and down that hill is a little bit of a challenge.
Absolutely, and that's something we're working through. We have a traffic engineer onboard, and that's something we're working through with NDOT and Carson City Transportation.
I have another question. This is probably for staff, but what are the zoning designations that are permitted within a mixed-use residential district?
So, Lee Plumm, Community Development Director. I'll take that, just because I was here in 2006 when this master plan was adopted. So the plan back then, as development was going like crazy up to 2006, the plan was to then move, adopt zoning districts, mixed-use zoning districts, so for mixed-use commercial, and have standards of how much residential, how much commercial, and the standards that would go along with those. But things crashed, staffing levels went way down, so that was, that was never done. And in the master plan itself, it does have the corresponding zoning districts for a lot of, for all the other, for actually, for all the other master plan designations, there are corresponding zoning districts identified in the, in the text of the document, and it's only these two mixed-use designations, or three mixed-use designations, that don't have that specific tie. So we were, we, as we've brought forward projects for areas in the mixed use, there's actually a mixed-use criteria checklist in the document. That's a separate two, two or three-page document that goes through. So as you review a project, you go through that. There's also some description about, generally, within a mixed-use commercial area, mixed-use residential area, how much residential, what the density is, the types of units that are permitted. So using those policies is how we've reviewed individual zoning and, and actual development projects relative to the master plan designation, mixed-use designations.
And the answer is?
And the answer is, is that there aren't any at the moment.
There aren't, yeah, there aren't specific identified zoning districts that would.
Within a mixed-use master plan. I, I have to agree with Commissioner Stowall. I, I would feel more comfortable if this were, if there were, if it were being proposed to amend the, the master plan to include, you know, either a mixed-use commercial and a portion of it, and a mixed-use residential, so that we aren't going to get all residential butted up directly with existing fairly high-density commercial uses and some industrial, and some, some industrial uses.
Again, Chris Baker, Manhart Consulting here on behalf of the applicant. To Lee's point, right now, from a zoning perspective, they're actually the same. There's no, there's no zoning criteria for, again, there's, there's a checklist, which we're using as our kind of guide. What we are identifying now through our, the planning process, is a true mix of uses. We are looking at commercial uses. We are looking at, you know, both neighborhood commercial and true commercial uses that would be buffers on, on portions of the property in between the industrial uses, and then some true commercial uses that could support, you know, if there is multifamily or single family. You know, there, there was an interesting comment made that, that's way out there, and there's, there's nothing out there. The problem with nothing out there is if you re-designate this to more of a commercial, there's nothing that goes there. You need rooftops to drive the commercial. So in my opinion, if you were to push for this to be re-designated to more of a commercial basis, you were driving it to fail. If no houses are there to, to support the commercial, there's never going to be commercial. So the trick here is to make this true mixed use, and actually have some rooftops built in that could support some of those commercial uses, meanwhile, buffering against the existing industrial. And that's what we're working on now.
Commissioner Brown?
I just have a process question. Elise Monroy, for the record. So I feel like the conversation, I'm having trouble tracking a little bit, but I feel like we're getting a little cart before the horse, maybe? So why, why don't we develop, or why doesn't the city or the planning department develop the zoning maps that are compatible to this designation first? Because it sounds like that might answer some of the questions, or is that just not how the process works? We have to make this change first to allow for those other changes? Does that make sense? I'm just, I'm confused by the process, and it seems like the questions we have could be answered if there were existing parts. So why don't we have those existing parts to then supplement what we're doing now?
So process-wise, generally speaking, master plan always comes first. They often come together. I think, you know, when they come together, that answers, that would answer a lot of your questions, but, but the master plan has to be in place, because the zoning has to be consistent with the master plan. So you can't approve a residential development if the master plan stays industrial. Maybe to put a little bit more context on it, going back to Hope's original presentation and how this got industrial in the master, in the master plan, it was actually mixed use through the entire two-year public review process. And it wasn't until literally the 11th hour, it was, it was actually on the agenda for the board for first reading when it was realized that there might be a problem with environmental health and, and the NDP laws with putting some sort of residential, anything other than industrial use basically on top of this landfill. So it was thrown on here, the policy was put in there as a placeholder. So, and I appreciate Candace's comments too about, yeah, there definitely was a bigger vision of the VNT coming down there then. But it's also looking at, this is a really large area. I mean, you show a map there, and looks like a little subdivision, but the distances between one end of the property and the other is quite big. So I think there, there can certainly be development proposed there that both addresses the concerns of the, of the surrounding industrial areas, as Chris said, encourages commercial, a better quality, commercial development along the frontage there, and still has the separation requirements, and still provides for some residential in this area. I think there's a lot of good points to consider. We're not to the point of, of looking at the details of where the certain zoning goes. It's the difficulty of the mixed use without having the code that's specific to the mixed use, but it is, back to your question, I mean, the, we have other places, we've adopted other places in the city with that master plan where the zoning today still isn't consistent with the master plan. You put the master plan there to encourage the change towards that in the future. So, so that's why the master plan designation comes first.
Just a quick question for Mr. Harrison and Taiyo America. How does he access his business? Is it through Asprey Drive or whatever, and down to Morgan Mill, or?
He's got a driveway up to it, from off of Deer Run.
It's a, it's a road called Antler Road, I believe, is what it's called, which is not, not actually shown on the map there. The roads actually going through the property aren't there. There's, believe it or not, they're actually not even right-of-way. There's easements. There's just public access easements through there. So those roads, truthfully, are, you know, would, would not look like that. Right now, everything just kind of deadens into the property, and then there's, you know, a lot of kind of scarring from trespassing over the years, I guess, truthfully. One more quick point to the zoning, and again, I think this is important because that's why we wouldn't come back with just a zoning map amendment, or kind of, like Paul indicated, kind of piecemealing this. You know, the trick here is to come up with a plan, you know, work through the planning process, work with the adjacent property owners, work with the city, and then marry the zoning, really kind of working backwards. Come up with, you know, a, an actual land plan, and identify uses, identify potential uses, and then, you know, coincide that with the zoning designation change, and then those two would come back in front of you. I know it is kind of odd, because typically, you would have just a list of, hey, here's best-case, worst-case scenario of what's allowed under this master plan designation. In this case, that's just not, just not possible. So, thanks.
Now and into the future, we're going to have a continuing need for affordable housing. I realize that you can't, at this point in time, determine whether that would be a proper location for affordable housing or not, but it's something that we really need to, to consider, because we're in dire need of affordable housing currently, and it will probably increase into the future. Is that any part of your thinking patterns?
Absolutely. And that, that's one of the, the reasons for the, the change to, to the mixed-use residential, is it does allow for multifamily uses. Those are kind of earmarked in some of the checklist that the city has, you know, in combination with some single-family stuff. You know, as you, as you get kind of up the hill here, you know, it wouldn't be best-suited for multifamily or other things, you know, but it would lend itself to maybe some, you know, 6,000-square-foot lots, or 9,000, or 12,000-square-foot lots, depending on slope. So what we would envision is kind of around the fringe area adjacent to the open space, you have, you know, some less dense, maybe more entry-level, single-family residential. And then, as you get kind of down to the heart, you have some multifamily residential, and then you have some supporting commercial uses kind of on the fringe, buffering in between the existing industrial uses. And again, the majority of those industrial properties are vacant. There, there's nothing there right now. There are, like Mr. Harrison's property, you know, a functioning industrial use. So those would obviously be the properties that we'd be looking to buffer. Hopefully, that answered the question.
But there's nothing to say that, in the future, that those might not be developed as industrial uses too. As we, as we fill in our existing commercial, or industrial areas around the airport, this, this could very well become a higher-density industrial development area.
And, and we would hope for that. And, you know, truthfully, at the zoning and at the mapping level, I think that could be handled through disclosure statements in title docs that, you know, hey, you're, you're buying or you're moving into, you know, an area that is kind of a redevelopment area, or, I mean, it's hard to say that considering the property hasn't ever been, been built upon, but, you know, it's really kind of a changing area, and yes, you'll be abutting against existing industrial uses or potential future industrial uses, and we need to make people aware of that. You know, our, our intent would obviously be never to, to take away anybody's, you know, underlying property rights. So we would be very cognizant of that.
Lee, does the mixed-use residential, does that envision having commercial mixed in with that? As opposed, so what's the difference between mixed-use commercial and mixed-use residential, I guess? Is one more higher-density or more of a residential use, and the other more of a commercial?
Yes, that's, that's what it is. I mean, it's just a more of a percentage in the, in the description that, that the mixed-use commercial is more commercial-oriented, the mixed-use residential is more residential-oriented.
But they both allow for?
Both allow the commercial and residential.
Okay. Thank you.
Probably more adequately describes us, you having more residential with some commercial.
And again, that, if you look at, at the existing master plan, it identifies kind of one or the other. It says mixed-use residential or mixed-use commercial. What Candace brought up was a very good point, though. Truthfully, if this was to say be, usually, you get a 70-30 split when you're talking about mixed use. If this was only 30% residential and 70% commercial, there'd be no commercial, because there would be no residences to support the commercial. So from our perspective, it made more sense to go the opposite direction and then have, you know, use those commercial properties as buffering, and then, you know, give them a built-in customer base with the residential.
Mr. Chair, Hope Salim, Planning Manager. When I made my presentation, I referenced the findings. I didn't speak specifically to the findings. If we go to page four of the staff report, as you consider this request, you're looking at four findings. The first finding is consistency with the master plan. I appreciate there may be feelings of disagreement with what the master plan says, but the master plan is the board's document. It's our policy document that we rely on to make decisions. In the master plan, Policy 1.5 of the VNT SPA clearly states that the subject area will be re-designated from industrial to mixed-use commercial or mixed-use residential upon approved engineering controls in accordance with so on and so forth. So staff reads that, and I'm hard-pressed not to make this finding. It seems pretty clear to me this is consistent with the master plan. Whether you agree with the master plan or not, it's the board's document. Whether you agree with the master plan or not, it's the board's document. Next, compatible land uses. If you look to the kind of middle of the paragraph there, I recognize that the, it's actually the last sentence, that the industrial designated to land to the west could be incompatible with residential, which is the exact conversation you're having, but would likely be compatible with a commercial or office use if that was oriented to have the back of house function in the vicinity of the industrial areas to create a physical buffer of a use buffer as opposed to what some people might visualize as a landscape buffer. So, given that we're not looking at purely a residential use, but it's a mixed use, so there's opportunity to use the non-residential uses as buffering instruments, staff was able to make that finding. In response to the changed conditions, staff relied on the NDP approval, granted it's an approval with comments, but clearly the placeholder of industrial was put in place due to the landfill. There's institutional memory in the form of the community development director, that that was the case, that that was always going to be mixed use, but then at the last minute because of, of cleanup issues, we'll say, with the landfill and NDPs sort of waiting on NDP, we had a placeholder. We're going to leave it industrial till we figure this out. Well, they've kind of figured it out. We have the letter. So, I think we do have a change of condition. And the last, the desired pattern of growth. The subject property is part of the city's eastern gateway, and I don't consider it to be sprawl. I consider it to be infill development, which is why I was able to make that fourth finding. So, I, I appreciate, I think the conversation's entirely valid and it's a good one. I'm not, I think it might be a little ahead of the game because we don't have the zoning. I think we can make the four findings, and I appreciate if, if there's commissioners who don't agree with that. But we also will be looking at development proposals and zoning, and I think the applicant's kind of on notice of the concerns concerning compatibility.
So, Hope, you're, you're saying basically through the zoning, we can actually see that the commercial goes in this area or whatever in such a way to create the buffer by the industrial or whatever, correct?
That's exactly correct because you're actually going to have to make different findings when you consider the zoning. And the finding that I pointed out was finding two of the three findings on zoning, which specifically speaks to compatibility with adjacent uses.
Thank you for that clarification.
Commissioner Tingle?
I see here under other city department or outside agency comments under the engineering division that sewer main studies for this area must analyze the capacity of the Morgan Mill lift station and may be required to make upgrades to the lift station. Would that be a cost borne by the, the developer, not by the city?
I can answer that. That'll be, that'll be a cost. That'll be our cost.
Wouldn't the plan out in that area also, I don't know if I saw it in there, would be, the utilities would be underground or would, et cetera? What, what about the existing?
Development standards require them to be under.
There's, there's existing transmission lines that are big, large transmission lines. No, it's all new service lines or, that service line is not the right term, but basically the new lines to serve the neighborhood all go underground.
They have to make sure the water is sufficient, et cetera, et cetera, and ties in here and, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Borders?
I, I think part of what we're wrestling with is, is that the, the master plan seems to indicate that this is exactly what we're supposed to do. The concern is what happens next. And, you know, in a perfect world, you could say, well, when the zoning comes and the land use plan comes, we can make amendments to it. The fear is always that once the camel's got his nose under the tent, you're going down a path you can't ever come back from. And I think part of the concern is if we do it all at once, then we have it. I think, I think what we have to as a board is, is to be strong enough to say that when the next, when the next set of documents shows up, that we have to make sure that it meets all the things that we're concerned about right now. But I, but I can't, I can't, and, and I have all those concerns, but I can't see what we're doing here is, is not appropriate.
Well, especially under condition A, consistency with master plan. It says it would be redesignated from industrial to mixed use commercial or mixed use residential. I mean, that, that was the plan all along. So, as long as like Hope said, through the zoning, we'll see that and the commitment that they, their plan is, I think you go forward with this part and then evaluate the next part when it comes to us. Any further discuss, oh, public comment? Seeing none. We'll bring it back for any, any further discussion or a motion.
Elise Monroy, I'm prepared to make a motion. I struggled with this for, and I'm glad we could have the conversation. I appreciate Hope bringing it back and pointing out the finding A and C, and I appreciate the discussion around B because my issue, I think what I'm having trouble with, and I tend to be pretty black and white, is the process seems backwards to me. We're being asked to make a determination about how the land is going to be used, but we don't really know what that looks like. And just like you said, we're worried about the next step. But with B, we have the ability to vet compatibility going forward, so I can be comfortable with it in that. So, I'm prepared to make a motion.
I actually had...
Yeah, so, okay. I move to adopt resolution number 2018 PCR1 recommending to the Board of Supervisors approval of MPA 18007, a master plan amendment from Manhard Consulting, property owner Tahoe IV LLC to amend the land use map as to redesignate 112.69 acres as depicted in exhibit one of the application for the master plan amendment, Draco Way vicinity dated January 2018, a copy of which is attached to this resolution, from industrial to mixed use residential on property located south of Astro Drive, APN 008-521-54-55-89 and -90, 008-522, I sound like a robot, -16 and -17 and -18 and 008-531-59 and 60, based on the findings contained in the staff report.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Marlon, seconds.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? On to F, staff report, non-action items.
Just a couple items. As, as Hope mentioned earlier, the second reading of the zoning code amendment for the tattoos parlor being a conditional use will go to the Board of Supervisors tomorrow. There's no, it was adopted in first reading, no problem. And, and as you noted, it's a conditional use, but there's no other separation, there was no other requirements included with that. So, everything's just considered as a special use permit. Also adopted by the Board of Supervisors was the zoning code amendment related to the appointment of planning commissioners. So, the result of that was that you will, there, there won't be a cutoff. I know, I think if, if you followed the discussions and everything, there was talk about how they're going to implement it. So, it'll be, it'll be phased in as planning commissioners' terms come up. So, there's two terms that come up this year.
They're going to be at large, right?
And they'll be at large because, and then in future years as terms come up and in the same years when there are new elected officials coming into office, they'll make their recommendations during those years. So, that, and, and the date, the term, your term expiration dates have been moved from June up to January just to coincide with that process. So, and I think it's a, I forget whose terms are up now. I think Mr. Borders and Soler, no. Yeah, I think, I think so. So, so you'll, they'll, but anyway, those, those, those planning later, sometime this coming up here, those, those positions will be announced in the paper and as they always do at the city manager's offices, notice that the exist, the current commissioners or board members or depending whatever they are, that if they want to reapply to, to come in and fill out the application, reapply.
So, the, the terms will go to January because a new board member would take office in January?
Just to coincide with the process, they want to, yeah.
And then they would appoint after they take...
Yeah, nominate, make a recommendation, the board's still appointing.
So, the, so the, in June, they will appoint two members for three and a half years?
Or before June. So, I think, so that's been changed.
But I mean, it'll, it'll be so...
For four years. They'll, they'll appoint them until, so this year will be appointed, this is till 2022.
Okay.
Till January 2022.
Till January of 2022.
Yeah. And then for, for the next, for the March Planning Commission, of course, we'll have the two continued items from tonight. We got billboards, for those who haven't been here, billboards require special use permit, but they're also only valid for five years, after which we make them come in and get a new special use permit. We have a handful of those coming in. We have another special, special use permit for an accessory structure in addition to the one that was continued tonight, which perhaps we can discuss as we discuss accessory dwellings in the next couple of months, which that won't be coming in March, I don't think, but I will be bringing back something regarding accessory dwellings to the planning commission the next couple of months. Special use permit for a fence and going to bring zoning ordinance to have some clarification to the, to signs related to marijuana establishments, which we'd need to make a correction, and we're just going to do some things to make, to clarify it. So, look forward to that next month. We have a, and we have an appeal of a, it was, yeah, I think there's, there's a code interpretation of, on a fence height setback issue that you, that will be before you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any commissioners' reports or comments?
Chairman?
Commissioner Borders?
In, in the process over the last year or so, when we were looking at, at signs along the freeway, and we talked about height and how, how they, how they look and how they flash, and there's a, there's a very specific standard that we have in our code about how long they remain before they flash. Anybody ever checked that? They're all flashing like crazy if you go look at them. Some of them are at a second now. Flash, 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 flash.
So, the interval...
Mm-hmm.
We, we can check on that. When they first put the, when they first put up the sign, they program it to be in compliance. And so, maybe through turnover, somebody loses sight of the requirement. So, we can certainly investigate that with the various business owners to ensure they're programmed consistent with the regulations.
Well, and we had, I had talked with Hope about, had noticed one of the establishments, marijuana establishments had some rather large banners suddenly posted as far as recreational available. And so, we, I had questioned Lee, and I'd, Lee, did you clarify that as those banners are okay or whatever?
Yeah. So, there's, there's permanent sign regulations talk about, that we adopted, talk about the permanent signage, and there's maximum sign area. But in addition to those signs, the sign codes allows every business to have temporary banners for a certain amount of time. So, they, I think as far as the standard interpretation, they, they are permitted. I think that's something, so we're going to pull, so previously, we had tried to reference specific code sections to, for marijuana establishments, and I think our, kind of the thought we're having, proposal will be to just put them in the, put this, all the sign standards in that marijuana establishment development standard. So, that's, that's someplace where possibly you can make that recommendation.
Because I remember when we were looking at this and addressing with the medical, the idea would look more like a nondescript business or a doctor's office or whatever. And I haven't seen too many doctor's offices with great big banners advertising.
Well, it's pharmacy or offices, and technically pharmacies or offices can have their temporary banners, so.
Commissioner Stowe?
Just a question of if we could possibly, this is not a priority, but it's just, just a concern or question, that a lot of times when businesses go out of business, the default is that the property becomes a used car lot. And we see this happening all the time up and down Carson, North Carson, as well as across from the Carson Mall. I just noticed the other day that the former Chinese drive-in place is now a, a used car lot. And I didn't, I, I just wondered if it might be an opportunity with all the time and money the city is spending and private, and, you know, businesses are spending and revitalizing all areas of Carson Street, whether we might want to look at that. I mean, I noticed even the infamous Eagle Gas North is turned into a used car lot once again, nonstop. So, just thought if we could...
That's what I noticed as they stopped selling gas, and now there's all kinds of vehicles for sale on the lot.
Always, always.
And if I may, the O'Reilly's Auto Parts North, there are a huge number of cars, some of them actually have license plates on them. A lot of them don't. It's, are they selling cars out of O'Reilly's Auto Parts across from Frontier Motel? Are they...
Cars and Auto Center.
Well, they've got the, the auto repair, but a lot of these cars don't have license plates on them. So, I'm wondering, are they, are they, there's no for sale signs on them or anything, they're just there, and they've been there for a long time. So, that is really disturbing when I walk the dog and it's like, ugh.
The other comments from...
They're legal as well, they didn't put them on the scoops.
Once again, public comment, seeing none.
I move adjourned.
Commissioner Borders, move adjourned. We have a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Adjourned.